Yeah, where are we? Chester Town Utilities Commission meeting to order for November 18th, 2013. Are there any deletions or corrections of the previous meeting?
I know that we approved the minutes presented.
Is there a second?
My second.
All in favor? Cash on hand is $1,097,265.68. Okay, Bill.
And Bob's here, but I'm just going to share this letter that came in today. This pretty much says it all concerning the hospital matter. This is a letter from Christopher Ralston of MDE to Michael Forlini, who is the attorney for the town, the environmental attorney. Dear Mr. Forlini, the Maryland Department of Environment has received your letter dated November 5th, 2013, to Ms. Priscilla Carroll, Assistant Attorney General. This letter was sent on behalf of the town in regard to Chester River Hospital Center's proposed groundwater remediation plan. The letter presented numerous questions and concerns from the town related to that plan. As you are aware, Dr. Robert Summers, Secretary of the Department, has committed to providing the town of Chester Town with responses to its questions and concerns prior to the hospital's planning moving forward. The Department will be reviewing the contents of the letter internally in an effort to respond to the town's questions over the next several weeks. The Department looks forward to continued progress with the town of Chester Town and the hospital towards implementing the plan safely. So, Bob, you can come on up. That's, to me, that's just another good sign that we're being heard with our concerns as we stated in previous meetings. Now, Bob has had a really bad back, and I think he probably should be in bed.
Yeah, do you want to sit or stand?
Bill, but we're still on a stop, right?
Yes, we're on a stop until we say so.
What that letter says, you know, really succinctly.
So, we are at a stop until we say and our attorney says to go, okay? You poor thing. Yeah, go ahead.
And that's really good news, especially with this reassurance, because all we had before was emails, but we have something in writing now. What we have not gotten was so far any answers to any of our questions. We still don't know what is in, obviously, though I was told two times that I would be getting that information. I haven't gotten that information. It might be time to schedule a meeting, just to see. And I think the 30-day window is coming up anyway, and we were told we would have progress meetings every 30 days. I have been going by the hospital periodically just to see if any trucks show up, but I don't have to do that now. The sewer jetter pump went up again. It is in the shop, and it's going to be in the cup for about two weeks. They're waiting on parts to come from the pump manufacturer. As soon as they get those parts in, they'll get it back together, get it up here and reinstall it. Until then, if we have any problems, I'll have to get an outside contractor as far as jetting any lines. In the next year or two, I'll probably be including in the budget a new jetter. The one that we have right now is at least 20 years old, so the maintenance on it is going to get more and more intense. Also, over Washington Park, we had another one of those pumps go up. Actually, both of them went up at the same time. We rebuilt one of them with parts that we had on hand, and the other one we had to send to the shop. That's going to be out for about three weeks, another three weeks, unless they find parts other than at the manufacturer, aftermarket parts. That's not looking very good. We have a new ID card system. We'll be starting that up. I have it up in my office. I've had the training on it. So, in the very near future, when utilities employees or town employees show up, they will actually have ID badges so that people can recognize them. It'll have their picture. It'll have town of Chester Town, the department, and the person's name.
Good.
As you know, I was out last week, so nothing major happened while I was out. The biggest issue we have on going is Water Street. That's going to be blacktop tomorrow. I talked to a guy. He was supposed to do it today, but because of how wet everything was, he said that he couldn't get blacktop from Bramble and that he could do it tomorrow. So, we're looking to have that done by tomorrow. And that is all I have.
Okay.
I sent you an email about turning. I assume you turned the water off the dog truck?
Yes, sir.
Because it's not, it's not working, and then we were going to put a sign on there. Are you going to do that?
They didn't put a sign? We'll take care of that tomorrow.
Yeah. I get a lot of inquiries, you know, and I was hoping you had turned it off and it didn't freeze up.
We did. I actually called the guys and had them do that while I was out, but we'll get the signs on there tomorrow.
Okay.
Where did the capital funds come from?
Capital funds, water and sewer.
Somebody hooked up.
I don't know.
I don't know. I'm going to have to ask Pat, if you know. It says capital funds, water and sewer hookup, $77,150.
That's what we have received so far this year. They were set aside for capital funds.
Okay, that's what we received.
They were not, they're not in the operating. They're separated.
Okay.
There were ones from the hospital, where we had hookups of a hospital.
And help pay for your jetter.
Yes.
I think he needs to go.
That's all I have.
That's all he has. Any questions? Let's try to keep it simple.
You going to give us a little medical report? How do you know? How are you going to be?
This typically happens to me every November, but not usually this bad. Every November, my back will twinge a little bit, and it'll lay me up for a day or two. But this time, it's improved. It's gotten better at what it's doing to me. I've seen the doctor, and I've had the x-rays. I'm getting an MRI tomorrow, but it's not a disabling thing. It's more of a muscle spasm issue.
Oh, is it terrible?
That's better than it is, that's for sure.
Yes.
Okay, let's go. Let's, is there a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
All in favor? Please.
Thank you. I apologize for being late.
No, no, honey, honey, you came in here and all, it's incredible.
Bob, I brought you some flowers.
Okay, let's call the mayor and council meeting to order for November 18th, 2013. I'm going to put this paper. Is there any deletions or corrections of the minutes of the meeting of the fourth in executive session of same date?
Okay, I know that we approved the minutes presented for the regular meeting in the executive session.
All in favor? Cash on hand in the bank says $2,117,618.72. May I go to pay the bills, please?
Okay, I move that we pay the bills as presented.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Okay, this is executive session summary, November 4th, 2013. Mayor Bailey called the executive session order at 9:12 PM, November 4th, to discuss the personnel matter and attendance of the meeting, where council members James Argato, Linda C. Kiper, Michael Mumford Pouts, and Merritt Stetson, along with WS Ingersoll Town Manager, Jennifer Mulligan, stenographer, and Chief Adrian Baker. The council made one motion for a new police hire. The meeting adjourned at 9:20. We have our auditors here today from Lindsay and Associates, but do you all want to come up? And Pat, I guess you're just a hot pop-in whenever you need to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bob Dis. I'm the audit partner with Lindsay and Associates, and as you probably know, we completed the audit of the town of Chester Town for the year ended June 30th, 2012. And I'm going to make, I'm going to go through the statements, just not page by page or line by line, because that would be boring, but just kind of give you an overall view for it. If you have questions as we go along, you can ask as we go along, or hold your applause at the very end. Starting on page one is the audit opinion letter. It gives the town a clean opinion, which I understand you've had for 17 years. Quite some time, very good, commendable. It's also, used to be called an unqualified opinion, now it's called an unmodified opinion. That goes on for four pages. Beginning on page five and running through probably about 12 or so, a little bit farther, 16 is what's called the management's discussion and analysis, and that is the section that's written by town management, probably Pat, maybe with Bill's assistance, where they tell the reader what it is they want to tell the reader within certain guidelines, and it has to focus on the current year, meaning 2013, and compare that to 2012, the prior year. The actual financial statements begin on page 17. It's important to note that there's two sets of financial statements, because they're on two different bases of accounting. The set begins on page 17, the balance sheet with the related income statement on 18, is the full accrual basis of accounting, meaning it takes everything in the town into account. It takes into account the fixed assets and appreciation expense, long-term debt for both governmental activities and business-type activities, which have four funds of those. And the related statements, the income statement is in on page 18, where you have expenses here and then across and down are revenues, which is a format that I still don't like after about 10 years of seeing it, but anyway, that's the way they decided. The fund financial statements begin on page 19. That's the modified accrual basis. That only takes into account current assets at the top and current liabilities down at the top. There's no fixed assets, no long-term debt. And then on page 21, you have the proprietary funds. You have the two major funds, the utilities fund and Marina, and then there's also combined non-major funds of the two funds, two departments of Satterfield and Cannon Street. Yeah. And then you have the related statements of income and cash flows then. The footnotes begin on page 24, and they're really interesting this year. About your accountant. Footnote one, as always and as required, talks about the significant accounting policies of the town. There's a couple of things that are different this year. First, you probably noticed the opinion letter, for example, is a little bit different. Says the same thing, but the AICPA made it a little longer, put headers inside of it. We also talk about implementing GASB 65, which did cause a restatement to the beginning equity of one of the enterprise funds, because you had, what was it, an asset of bond issuance cost, or something to that effect, that was being amortized, and all of a sudden, they said, oh, no, you got to expense that. So, okay, we did that. So, there's a couple of interesting things in there if you're really paying close attention. Other interesting footnotes might be footnote three on page, beginning on page 33, which talks about the town's deposits, and maybe the term on 32, talks about deposits, how much cash you have on hand, that sort of thing. Capital assets is talked about on page 35, where we show the beginning balance and increases and decreases.
You're going so fast, I can't even turn the pages.
Most people prefer it if I get in and out of your book. If you like me, I can go slower and read.
No, no, it's fine.
I've been reading it this week, and it's managed to put me asleep several times.
There you go. There you go. And when you get an accountant named Bob standing in front of you, you know, it's dark outside, you sleep. I don't know. So, you've got the fixed assets there, appreciation expense and accumulated appreciation for both the general fund governmental activities there on 35, page 36, all the business-type activities. Long-term debt, we start talking about on page 37. I won't go into any detail there. You can read that yourself. Now, the really interesting part that most people immediately turn to will be the budget to actual comparison. We're required to show original budget, final budget, to the actual, and then the variance. That starts on page 47 with the revenues. There's two pages of that. And then after that, the expenditures, and this is all the governmental fund, the general fund. And if I'm not mistaken, we go into the various proprietary funds or enterprise funds in the back. The last couple of pages is the report on internal control, in which we detail any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies we find in the internal control of the town, and the report says we did not find any. So, yay, Pat.
Yay, Pat.
And that's really our report. We also have issued, it's called a SASS, one, I think it's 14, letter, in which we say that we had no disagreements with management. We didn't have any difficulties. We didn't make any significant adjustments to the accounts, anything of that nature, and doesn't say, but we did, in fact, enjoy doing this audit and glad to have you at your place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we thank Pat and Joe, you all. It's remarkable that anybody can think this hard for this long period of time.
What am I thinking, Pat? I'm growing up.
Oh, thank God for people like you in the world. They keep us straight. Council, any questions?
No, he's the, actually, the most humorous county. Great. How about a duck one?
I'll put that on my resume. Now, if you have questions, if you don't have questions now, if you have questions later, you look on page one, you'll find our letterhead. Feel free to give us a call throughout the year.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Anybody? Anybody?
Not yet.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I covered everything.
That was fun.
All right. Thank you very much.
I wonder if the speed version, you know.
I will.
It'll go slower next year if I like.
No, well, I hope here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have speed next year.
I hope here.
Have speed next year. You don't be here.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, chief.
Time for the Steve's Police Report.
What? That was amazing.
Good presentation. Good evening, mayor and council. I'd like to present the October 2013 Chester Town Police Report. Our administrative hours were 70, which was 4% of our time. Our criminal investigations were 17 hours, yielding 1%.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir, you may.
Our investigators assigned with the Kent, you don't count his, her, or ours?
Not, no, sir.
As I was going to say, with what's been going on, 1%.
Yeah, oh, no, sir, that's not 1%, that's just our general control. Accident investigation, nine, at 1%. Vehicle patrol was 815 at 51%. 128 hours for 8% on foot patrol. Training was 121 hours for 7%. Court was 41 hours at 2%, and our overtime was 132 hours at 8%. Here's the overtime breakdown. The real meaningful number, I think, is our quarterly budget report, which I got from Pat, and our overtime expenditure is at 25%. Of course, that's, that one quarter of the years are very appropriate. You know, it's not going to be perfect like that, but it tells me we're right in where we need to be. And if you want to see this pie chart, the blue area is the reimbursed overtime, that was 30%, so that overtime of 8%, taking out the overtime that's reimbursed, would really be more like 6%. In regards to arrests, we had 18 adult arrests and yielded 38 separate charges. Broken down, that was 10 thefts, five assaults, three bad checks, three for other agencies, TCS, two armed robbery, two reckless endangerment, two FTAs, and one each for an ex parte, a failed evade, perjury, robbery, trespass, checks, possession of alcohol, firearm, using a felony, and one charge for roving vagabond. There were no juvenile arrests. There were 11 civil citations issued, issued, broken down. There were six for open containers, three for loud noise, two for public urination. Our Part I offenses were 15. We cleared six by arrest, one with exception. Our Part II offenses were 16. We cleared nine by arrest, one with exception. Murder vehicle citations, 63. Murder vehicle warnings, 150, and the red speed citations are continuing to be pretty high at 259. And we wrote five criminal citations. Ward one had 2% of the calls. Ward two had 43. Ward three had 18. Ward four had 21%, and there were 6% outside of jurisdiction. Our busiest day for calls of service was Wednesday, and our busiest times for service were at 4 o'clock, followed closely, or at 3 to 4, followed closely by 4 to 5 o'clock.
They talk about in the afternoon?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. That was the majority of, like, business traffic, and that's what it's been during.
You don't know whether it was more Wednesdays this month than...
I'm not sure, but it might.
You laugh at that, but some months have more Wednesdays than others.
Absolutely, that's absolutely true.
Yep, there were five, five Wednesdays.
Yeah, well, that's probably.
Five Wednesdays, yeah. But usually, if it evens out, it's usually Saturday or Sunday.
It usually is, and it's probably unlikely.
What happened between Ward two and four? How did I manage to...
Get lower than more, Doc?
Below.
Well, I told you, I think, I think one of the things was we were not accurately counting or uncounting in the past when we were counting patrol checks as calls for service. And patrol check is a predetermined and basically required check of an area that we review quite a few in the ward based on our old hotspot statistics. And calls for service is an actual call to service, so I think that's why we've changed our numbers on it.
No real update on our two major?
I would like to comment, if I may. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Of course, that's in this month current, but we've had two armed robberies this past month, basically within the last two weeks. One was at Domino's, and one was at Royal Arms. And, you know, we can always use the help of the public. We are being very aggressive in our pursuit of finding the people that committed these crimes and proactively doing everything we can to prohibit it anymore. The description of both those incidences basically is that in the very early morning hours or late evening hours, both stores were entered, and subjects were armed, took money, left on foot, and in both cases, we had a K-9 track that went so many hundred yards and stopped in a parking lot, indicating to us that there was a vehicle that the bad guys got in and left. So, you know, we've been visiting the businesses. Everybody is working well together. I had a meeting with our joint agencies, Kent Sheriff, Queen Anne Sheriff, MSP, this past week. You'll see more officers on the road. We're working together, and if anybody has any information, then you can call the police department. We're all ears.
Is it pretty much clear in your mind that they're the same, same culprits?
I believe they are, yes, sir. Very similar.
And that was very close?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that the businesses here, we didn't used to have 24-hour service as far as stores? Is there anything at all that these places can do to protect or...
There is, and I think they're doing that, but to reiterate some of it, you know, obviously keep doors and windows that are blocked that are not the entrance for customers, you know, don't leave the back door open or the window open or something like that. They are emptying their cash drawers more frequently, so that if there is a robbery, they're not going to, you know, they're not going to get much. And just pay attention to detail. If someone looks suspicious, give us a call. If the business wants an escort, we're providing escort to money drops, and like I said, we're just having a higher visible presence, and, you know, we'll keep working on it.
Sure. Any other questions for chief?
Chief, we have a joint agreement with Queen Anne's now that's got to get fully executed.
It hasn't been officially signed. A thank you for signing it. It was sent down to them, and I anticipate they will be signed anytime. And that's an MRU, which basically, you know, we back them up and they back us up, and it's just an official document, so.
You may have done, you may have done this already, but I do know there's a couple of places in town, because I had noticed them, they have the doorways marked so that when the person enters and exits, they can at least give a reasonable estimation of how tall they are, and so.
Yeah, we encourage that.
As you know, as a policeman, sometimes they tell you that guy was at least 6'5", and it turns out he was 5'10", you know, because you get two inches with every inch on the barrel of a gun, you get that much bigger, so.
Yes, sir. We're employing that strategy.
Okay, anything else?
I just wanted to ask about the foot patrol.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that it takes a lot of time to be on foot, but there's no, no other way to see the things that a person sees when they're on foot.
Yes, ma'am.
Because there could be certainly more coverage in my ward. I rarely ever see an officer on foot in the third room.
Okay, yeah, I agree with you, foot patrols, and what I know is other council members do it as well. It's a trade, you know, we don't, it's a luxury to some degree. If I have one officer, I don't need to put him in a position that he has to play the 100-yard dash to get back to the vehicle and get to another call.
Right, right.
You know, and so, when somebody's in training and all those other kind of things, we may not have the availability, but I am mindful that it's important and would point out that it's not just somebody going for a walk.
Exactly.
They're paying attention to a lot of things, and the information that we are able to receive back is also great.
Right, that's it. That's the greatest key to many, many things.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Bill.
Okay, mayor. The charter says that within 48 hours after the closing of the polls, the board of supervisors of election shall determine the vote cast for each candidate and shall certify the results of the election to the town manager, who shall record the results in the minutes of the council. So, I'm doing that right now. They met November 6th, 2013, the final tally for the three categories, mayoral, and it's in alphabetical order. Bill Arrowood, 263. Sarah Brown, 90. Chris Serena, 604. Armin Fletcher, 41. Holly Geddes, 21. Thomas Hayman, 7. Linda Kiper, 266. The final tally for the first ward candidates are as follows. Liz Gross, 263. Jim Gatto, 153. The final tally for the third ward candidates is as follows. Mabel Mumford Pouts, 125. Sam Shogi, 205. Alex Smolins, 49. So, that's to wrap up, I think, the, as far as, it was a very complicated election, and I think the, I had to say it again, because I said it before the election, that Jen did a tremendous job. The board of supervisors of election did a super job. So did Kent County Board of Supervisors of Elections in helping us put that election on. We never had so many candidates, and obviously, we assumed that there would be large crowds, that we had lots of voting machines, and still, with that, still, there were some delays, and I think they were handled with the kind of attitude that you expect in this town.
I'd just like to add that I thought, and I've only been in two town elections, this one was probably the best, especially when you realize we had seven candidates for one office and five for another, the other offices. It was just run very professionally, and I happened to go down and watch and count the absentee ballots. It was Don Cantor, Kobe Schrower, Loretta Lodge, and of course, Jen. Those ballots were not only counted once, they were checked, they were counted once, they were counted twice. They really took their job very, very seriously. I was very much impressed with it. There was no, nothing but serious business going on counting those absentee ballots, and I'm sure they carried that through all of their work, so I really think all those people, and I thank them, and they say, well, you know, we're doing our civil duty.
Yeah, they're a very nice group.
Very nice of them.
There's something to think about in the future is the traffic with this intersection, being like it is anyway. I don't know if there's somewhere else in Chester Town where the election could be held.
And the Board of Education was a great site.
It was ideal. It was ideal in that it has its own parking lot. This is all fire department. And if Dollar General, whoever the ownership of that area, if they had clamped down on us and said, "No parking," we would have been really, really in trouble.
Well, they use it for the regular elections too, so I mean, I don't know that we have a better site.
We don't.
Well, you'll probably never have that many candidates again.
Right.
And that caused some of it, but there was, there was times when that it was really jammed up as far as the entire intersection.
A sign of a prosperous election. I will say that we have all the election results off the cloud now from 1975. And the number of votes cast for the candidates, some people aren't with us anymore, some you won't remember, some kooky write-ins. Anybody who wants that, I'll send it to you. Jen just updated it through 2013. I mean, it's a historical record too. It's fun to look at, fun to remember.
Jen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm very proud of you.
Oh, thank you.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
One of, a few others, sorry. Did you want to say something?
No, I just said it was a lot of work.
The permit, signed a permit today for the Christmas parade, that's the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Is it in that file, Jen? Is it in that file?
Um...
It doesn't matter.
I didn't see it.
It follows the lighting, the night before that we lighted the Christmas tree and the following morning, Saturday, after Thanksgiving. The town is always crowded. It's fun to be downtown, see people you haven't seen for a long time.
Start at 10 o'clock, real quick, just so they know. 10 o'clock on the 30th.
This year, fireworks, which is always a bargain, are, they're going to cost more because LGIT and I think other insurance companies said, "Hey, what, we're insuring the people who shoot off the fireworks," and so they're separating themselves from that. We, our, the people who shoot off our fireworks do so much of it for free that we're negotiating with them and it's going to cost around $4,000, but they do multiple shows. So I'm still talking with them about who would insure them. I don't think we can insure them and say, "Hey, that's our guy," but if we can, I've already talked to one insurance agent. But we can expect that and we have to order the show pretty soon. We have to decide that we're going to have a show, first off. I asked the college quickly, can we use the waterfront side again? And hopefully the answer would be the same with all the assurances and insurance.
I'm not quite sure.
I'm sorry, I wasn't finished.
We have to insure the shooters?
Yeah.
It looks to me like the company that does the shooting insurance.
Well, that's normally, that's, you're exactly right. Normally, if you pay $50,000, you have Xanbelle come in. 4,500, that's going to be the insurance that they have. But our shooter does our show for free. It costs us 10 grand. We do all the work of putting the mortars in the ground and that's why it costs us 10 grand instead of 30 or 40. Now, we've backed the show off and had, I think, still popular results. We don't shoot off large shells anymore because of proximity of the armory. I think the public enjoys it. I'm just bracing you for this. I think at some point you have to make a commitment that we are going to have them or we're not and proceed from there.
And this 4th of July is First Friday, 2014.
What font?
It's First Friday. And I've already promised Andy that we're going to have a big celebration.
You promised what?
I've already made promises that we're going to have a big celebration on the 4th because it's First Friday.
It's First, what a great day to have a 4th of July, First Friday, July.
300th and 8th birthday.
We got it, so then the company's going to pay for the fireworks.
No, I'm not going to pay.
No, 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 no.
It's coming out of the hotel tax, like it did last year.
Come on, 10,000 is a cheap cost.
It is, absolutely.
This is a tradition in this country and I think it's a wonderful tradition to follow.
And I think it's wonderful down in Rock Hall when they have them. And I think it's wonderful that Great Oaks has them. And I think it's wonderful that they have them.
I can't believe you're not a patriot.
Shoot off the dog park, maybe?
Well, the only thing I believe we're missing is that some of the other towns put a request in the Tywhiter Trader for contributions.
We do.
And I think we should be sure.
We do.
Yeah, be sure that we do that and yes, we definitely should have the fireworks.
We should have fireworks and we should absolutely ensure the people who shoot the fireworks off are absolutely not charging us as company.
I mean, that's the least we can do for all the people who have sacrificed their lives in this country to keep us going.
The decision you make now is to have fireworks because they order the show now.
Is there a motion to approve?
I approve it.
Fireworks, okay, is there a second? A second. Call for the questions, all in favor, aye, aye, opposed.
You're always outvoted, Marty. I don't even know why you're even bringing it up.
I'm all for the fireworks. The town's not paying for it.
I actually had it on the agenda too. I didn't slide that one in like these next ones I'm going to slide in.
I got it for 12.
I'd like to read a letter from Lion Bob Knapp. Dear Mr. Ingersoll, ma'am. He's not lying. He's lying.
It was L-I-O-N, remember? Spelled it wrong.
He got it right.
L-I-O-N, lion.
What's wrong?
Not Larry, Lions, but Lion Bob Knapp. Hey, you're really... A used car salesman. Talk to Lion Bob Knapp, the car salesman, okay. Dear Mr. Ingersoll, on behalf of the Chestertown Lions Club, I would like to thank you and all your staff for helping us with the 2013 Chestertown Halloween Parade. Your provision of the landing platform and stairs is instrumental to the safety of the people in the judges stand. Special thanks to Mr. J.R. Trigo, his crew, Larry Wilbank, T.J. Baxter for their tireless efforts in making this happen. As always, the town's contribution efforts directly contributed to the success of the parade. Thanks again, and we're looking forward to working with you next year. Yeah, I think it was very nice.
It was. Very nice.
He does an absolutely fabulous job.
Good follow-up, good preliminary work, good follow-up.
It's retired military.
Yeah, and it shows. I mean, his follow-through is excellent. I mean, he's complimenting not us, but he's the one that organized the whole thing. That's just what I thought. When I saw this note, why aren't we writing him a note? And put Lion Bill Ingersoll. People would agree with that.
Did the scarecrow people, did scarecrows get their money?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bump outs, the long awaited...
Oh, I have trees.
The long-awaited European hornbeak trees were planted in the bump outs last week by Sharp Tree Service. Think they're the perfect tree. They don't grow out. People will be able to walk by them. We have a tree committee member here right now. Ruth, what do you think? You guys made a good choice and it was worth the wait. Went to Garnett Elementary School last week to talk to Principal Stacy Clark about some other things and decided that Linda and I had talked about inviting the 4th grade social studies class to come here and play mayor and council, learn the civics of the small town. The kids really have a lot of fun and I think your granddaughter did it once. People remember it. They come here and they sit in the mayor's seat, they sit in the council's seats, they sit in the manager's seats and their friends or classmates heat them with questions that I load them up with, so they get a real civics lesson. So there are other issues at the school and maybe we have a visitor or two tonight about that and I can report on that later if it's a problem. The tree planting bid opening, Case worked on, has been working on this for the Margot G. Bailey Community Park. In this case, it's a $32,000 grant and instead of having a total cost of the bid, we already knew that, so the question is how many trees could you plant for that? So with that unusual kind of bid opening, we had six bids that we opened on Fridays. First one was from Anthony's Landscaping, 140 trees. Sharp Lawn and Tree, 168 trees. Speakman Nursery, 109. Greenscapes, 125. Unity Landscaping, 120. Chester River Landscaping, 130. I'm going to sneeze. In any case, we've had the high bidder, which is the low bidder, Sharp Lawn and Tree with 168 trees. They're going to meet with the tree committee later on. Case has recommended that this, there were no conditions on this bid. The trees were all indigenous, that were selected, and they're three inches and above, so that they're warranted for a year and watered for a year and maintained. So that's a harsh climate out there in Minnesota. I recommend that you award the bid to Sharp Lawn and Tree so they can proceed with this fabulous grant that'll be over by mid-December.
They're going to water them through?
Yeah, they have to maintain them for a year.
Well, you could split it and have each one of the companies put in X number.
Could've.
Is there a motion to accept that?
All this watering.
Is there a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to award them to Sharp.
Okay, sure. Second. All in favor? Okay.
I didn't catch it. Is the 4th grade actually coming here?
Yeah, I think they will, the social studies classes, probably they break it up into two classes and they'll come down here.
But not this year.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, that's what the whole invitation was based, yeah.
Well, we only have so far to go, so...
Well, the kids don't think like that. They think there's plenty of time.
I know, but how about, you didn't set a date or you didn't...
I gave the principal the invitation. I really wasn't there about that. I was there about the problem that we're having on a side street with buses unloading and I think we probably...
I believe it's resolved. It's very quiet today.
Good. It was partly resolved, the buses...
And quite frankly, it'll be safer with all around.
Well, while the chief's here, chief, I think what we were finding is we had resident complaints that people were parking the wrong way, turning around in the driveways, buses were unloading on Kent Circle. And I went to the school, I'd actually made some phone calls and talked to chief because the parents and stuff were walking to the side door, or the back door actually, and knocking on it and somebody would let them in. And I actually tried to do it myself and I wasn't let in, which I thought was good. It's eight or nine steps up there and I found out from talking with the principal that it's actually head start and it's not really connected with the school at all, not even connected with the Judy Center. They rent from the school, they go in and out there and they had had them going in through the main, my preference would be that they go through the front door, but they had, they come at all times of day, so the parents were outside 11 or 12 or 10. And so they came up with this last year before Stacy was the principal. I'm not saying that it's a problem. I know we've worked on it because the head start buses now unload and load behind the school where all the other buses do. So now it's just a matter of having people park the right way, not be noisy while they're waiting for their kids. And chief, do you have anything to add to that?
I just had to add that, yes, I did. The principal, I think, was very proactive once it was brought to your attention. I think she just has it pretty well under control.
And George Kassendike, are you here about that or...
No, I'm just here.
Okay, good, good. Because George is a neighbor, but George hasn't said a word to me about it. And I've been talking to two neighbors in particular, we're working on the problem. Hopefully that it's all worked out. The principal couldn't have been nicer and she was, told us all the facts that we needed to have. We thought that they're adding like 12 cameras to the perimeter of the school in general, part of their fiber optic thing, so, you know, you can't be, you can't be too safe these days. I sent out the other day, I know it was a big packet, I sent out the 514 report that we got from S.H.A. and it's daunting because they put their estimates in the millions for a sidewalk out to the area of Coventry. And it's, I won't say we didn't expect that, but people who have worked with them, you know, know that that sort of thing, it's like asking Delmarva to bury the wires on Main Street. You'll get a bid of $16 million, so you'll just go away. But it's not the end of this, it's really the beginning. We're also working hard on the Gateway Park and trying to get our engineer to weave that into a safer intersection. So I just want you to have as much information as you can possibly have and that's plenty right there. It shows you how it should be done. Now, how it will be done financially is probably another story. I don't think they should just say, "Hey, Chestertown would cost $2.5 million to do this." I think they should say, "Yeah, we're getting ready to do it. It's so big, we're going to do it over time." But it's a state road. I mean, so thanks for telling us how much it's going to cost, now go build it.
Yeah, that...
Now we'll figure that out.
I'm, when I saw that number, I thought, a million dollars to build sidewalk? It's almost like they wanted to say, "Well, you know, I guess it's too much, so we'll go away." And I think with Sam's here, showcase here tonight, and you have, you get a packet for the people, the new people coming in because this is...
They'll have it.
They'll have it. Good. This has got to be, sit on this until we get some action from State Highway. Delmarva Power's the same thing, sorry.
Wait, it gives us, it gives us a mark, you know? They've done these things and I think that it's as simple as, I mean, you can look at it in two ways, perfect or usable. We are still talking about lighting and intensifying lighting and finding better ways to make it safer for people who are walking along there now. But a simple road widening could, I mean...
It's, I read the thing over and it looked like they were going out of their way to make it very expensive.
Yeah.
That first estimate, $6 million, then they got it down to $4 million.
It seemed like a bargain when you look at it.
Well, it's not going to be an easy job.
Well, no, because of the ditches and things like that.
There's not enough room the way the road is at the present time, but there's two things. More lighting and people themselves need to wear something bright if they're going out and walk. Not only that road, Quaker Neck Road is very, is getting more dangerous all the time.
Dark clothing.
Right on the fine line. And where's the car supposed to go?
That's scary when you pass somebody who's wearing totally dark clothing on a dark road.
It really is.
It's on Washington Avenue, everybody.
Yeah.
Right around Saturday. It does have sidewalk on one side.
Well, this goes back to the safety thing, whether they can put something in the road or in the bicycle lanes or side lanes, something to light up the way. There's, I can't believe we can't, with all the technology, there can't be something that could interim to make it things more, that area more visible. That's right.
I thought it was interesting, they cited the fact that we've only had one person who was hit in the hospital. I thought, what do we need to get, five or six volunteers to go out there?
It's just so many people out there now, 500 homes.
And they act like there's nobody out there in that report. And they, a comment was made once, not a while back about, and I heard it at a kind of commissioners' meeting where someone said, "State Highway said, well, only one person's been killed."
That's outrageous.
Or seriously injured. And that's when one of the commissioners said, "Uh, is there a body count we have to have first?" So I think between 514 and you look at the bypass that needs some good lighting in those lanes where people walk in, it's another area that's going to be dark and difficult. We really have to look at those...
And it's the same engineering. It's the same...
Same engineering.
They have a 60 or 70-foot wide and they have a road with shoulders that are wide and they can't dream up how to make those shoulders work. They're still looking at this road as a state highway and not a town street. There's a totally different approach to it.
It's mentality. And it's the thing about, we want to listen to the community, well, the community's been begging you. Those are two serious areas for us.
Well, an extension of this into the roundabout. Finished drafting a letter, I'll bring it the next day or two to Bill. We talked about this three weeks ago, about response to state highways. They put out the bid, basically the same roundabout design that we went to them to meet about and concerned about the lack of recognizing that this is, this is an entryway to Chestertown. And the bypass, what they put out the bid was almost identical to what they sent us originally a year ago. And Bill asked me to take a look at it, to look at the letter we sent them and depend on it, and I'll have that back to Bill for his review. But it's, this is moving, this road is moving, and talking like a planner again, but it's moving from a rural highway to an urban road. We've got another development, you know, they're going to cluster along that highway and we've got to begin converting it to a walkable road with a 30 mile an hour speed limit rather than a 50 mile. It's Washington Avenue 100 years ago, 60 years ago, whatever. Yeah, speed, I was out there at the Gateway Park today and speed's a big factor on 20 Yeah, speed, I was out there at the, the Gateway Park today and speed's a big factor on twenty and 514. Just slowing them down ten miles an hour, which they'll go over, but slowing them down and I think we can improve sightlines around the Gateway Park because it's all overgrown on either side.
That stop sign for High Street has done wonders as far as slowing people down now, compared to what they used to be. By the time they hit, hit, uh, Brooks's Mill, they used to be doing fifty miles an hour, now they have to at least stop and start out.
Right.
You know, when you go, when you're going away to Ocean City on Route fifty, you go through, I forget which town it is, and they have all these kind of rumble strips of the road to slow people down as they're approaching the town saying, speed extremely enforced, I can't believe, yeah. Yeah, and I can't believe you can't get some of these strips as you're approaching towns to pay attention. So let's, I'd like to ask that question, that cannot be expensive, it's not gonna be a million dollars, I don't think.
Remember, uh, Mr. Gridline or Greedon, he, he was here, he had, he had, he was gonna have school for people, uh, on walking, he was gonna, he was gonna help with the education of that. I just think we have to keep the heat on and keep having them meet with us and say, okay, where, where are we now, where are we now?
Yeah, I think so too. Okay, I think this is something that has gotta just, not that drippy faucet that drips and drips, and finally they'll make, to make us go away, they'll say, okay, fine.
The squeaky wheel gets you.
Marty learned when he first took office, he had a complaint at Lamont Chemical about going in and going out, remember?
Oh, yeah.
The first thing you brought up, how's that coming?
Same way.
Same way that, when they told me you weren't gonna get a roundabout, you were gonna get a red light.
Okay, well, that's the end of my report.
Okay. Um, I've just got a couple of things, um, the Christmas decorating for the houses, I'd like to do it as we always did with each council member doing their award, uh, I would do the, uh, business award and the daytime award. Our last meeting in December is the fourteenth, sixteenth, which is really too early for us to announce the winners, so what I'd like to see everybody do is turn their nominations in on the twenty-first, whatever they, what's the twenty-first?
Twenty-first is the Tuesday.
Okay, Monday the twentieth then, turn your, your, um, your winners in on the twentieth, Monday the twentieth, and they will be announced at the first meeting in January.
I think we did it last year after this.
Yeah, we did, yeah, yeah.
It only makes sense.
Oh, yeah, sixteenth is too early, God, I can't, uh, sixteenth, that's a little scary, isn't it? Okay, um, also I have the, Evergrain is applying to the Board of Licenses of County Commissioners for a wine license, um, for sale and, um-
Off premises sale.
Off premises sale, so this will be heard by-
On or off, I didn't understand, on the premises or off the premises?
It's for carryout.
I thought it was for sales.
Off sales. On, on the premises as Evergrain, a Class A wine license off sales, off the premises known as Evergrain. Which will authorize a holder to keep for sale and to sell wine at retail at the place therein described for consumption elsewhere.
You said Class A?
Yes.
That is off sales.
That's off sales.
And B is restaurants is on sale.
On, so B is on-
B is a bar.
Okay, so this is on sales and if you have any concerns, um, the meeting will be at December third at six P M. and the Commissioner's Hearing Room, four hundred High Street.
What's the date?
Uh, December third. Okay, um, in keeping with the spirit, when Jim brought up the fact that we would like to have these, our committees and commissions, um, respond to us with a monthly minutes, so forth. I would like us, uh, with your approval at next meeting to adopt a resolution that the Green Team be formally included as a town committee. This will be resolution two dash twenty thirteen. They recently met and their, um, mission statement is as follows, the Chestertown Green Team, a community group, promotes careful stewardship, research, and wise use of national economic resources with the goal of achieving an improved, an improved quality of life for the community and the future generations through sustainable initiatives. So if you want to agree, agreed, then we will have the resolution for us next meeting to adopt.
Now, this will be a committee, not a commission?
It's a committee, commission would have, a commission would have to be in the charter. So this would be a committee in which case they are responsible for sending monthly minutes of the meetings and posting the meetings.
They're gonna meet monthly?
Yeah, they, they still do meet monthly, they always do. Anybody having a problem with this?
We looked at it.
No, I, I think it, it fits the pattern.
It fits the pattern that you had brought up.
They're all non-paid, right?
All non-paid. Yep, okay, um, then we'll have this on next agenda with the, the accompanied resolution. Um, and now we'd like to have an executive session for hospital legal services and Quakerneck Sewer Line.
So I wrote that last week, I don't think that the hospital legal, we have a bill, um, and I don't think it's an executive session matter.
Okay.
Unless, unless you're gonna talk about the, I have a bill for the services of our environmental attorney, which I'll present to you, uh, for payment in the, I think.
Just keep track of them because if that bill gets into our order, we'll just add it on the sewer line.
I think, uh, yeah, I think it's reasonable for the number of hours that he's put in, but I, I just, uh, but I do, I do wanna talk about the Quakerneck Sewer, Sewer Line.
So you want an executive session?
Yes.
Yes.
You wanna do it, Marty?
And eighty third barrel, second ten dash five oh eight.
Is there sex, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, um, board reports.
Townwide.
Townwide, yes. Anybody got anything?
Yeah.
Okay, Jim.
Last year, uh, first Friday fell on a Wednesday, or-
First Friday fell on a Wednesday.
Fell on the same day we had the, the lighting, like we're doing this year, okay, downtown. And one thing that stood out was, uh, the tourist center and the town hall were dark and it's the entryway from two thirteen. And what I would like to see is that the town put some lights on, either in the windows or some spots, so that the corners lit up to get into downtown that night at least. Talking about lighting the town hall and, uh, and the visitor's center, at least on the, the first Friday. Last year was dark and, and it really showed up with everything lit up downtown, so it's, okay.
Jimmy, can you maybe go and let us do that?
What kind of lighting you want?
He just, he wants the inside lights.
It could be, I, in my world, I'd have some spots on the building, given the time it is, lights from inside would be fine, just to show that the building is, is active.
There are spots on the building, turn the inside lights on, is that what you mean, just to make it more inviting?
Yeah.
Yeah, the street is really dark.
The lobby area.
Well, get a, get a light bulb.
There's two lights that are, that are pointing at this building and, uh, a couple of years ago, we asked them to put a light down in front of the visitor's center and they pointed it at this building too, said, if you go outside, you'll see. Uh, and I've gotta get Delmarva to, to undo that and that way there'd be more light on that corner, but Royal Farms is lit up, I'll tell you that.
Red light or green light?
Every room should have a pink light in it, it's good for your skin complexion.
Too late, that shit's hell.
Oh, God, Margo, what brought that on?
Oh, I read it and so I put one of, one of the lights I don't use in my, my living room, so Owen came in one night and turned the light on and he looked at me and said, what is wrong with you?
They find that in Fordella's?
Why are you reading this?
Where did they discover that?
So put my face under it, it's, see, smooth skin, uh, sorry, Mom.
Okay, moving on, I think one of the first things that the, um, town manager should direct, uh, we have three new novices gonna be on the board, uh, come January. And I think a review from our town attorney on open meetings law, uh, ethics and all those, uh, they could get them in trouble real quick, should be presented to them firsthand so they know where the boundaries are. Because those of us who've been with government, we, we know about who to talk to, not to talk to, what to talk to, they don't, let's keep them, um, out of trouble by just having town attorney make a presentation right off to them. And that would cover the ethics, would cover, uh, financial statements, all the stuff they have to do to, to stay. It just, it downed on me that, you know, basically we're only gonna have two people left here and, um, there's gonna be three new ones and, uh, you know, those of us that came on learned by osmosis or we knew it ahead of time, uh, this way it, it puts everybody on the even keel.
Okay.
And, uh, trees, uh, have access to a couple of trees, if we need some more trees, let's say along two ninety-one, or someplace in town, there are large trees, cheap.
Large trees, cheap, we got, we have lying Bob, the car, used car salesman, cheap trees.
Yeah, cheap trees. Yeah, I saw your email, but on, for State Highway, there's another process for tree planting than we have, this is a little simpler here.
Well, if you've got any town streets we can put one, anyway, that's it.
If the mayor was here, she'd say next.
It'd be nice if the mayor would be the next person to you, I imagine.
What?
What?
Linda, go now.
Oh, please do. I don't know, I just got lost, Linda.
If, um, I, I know some of the businesses have had to replace trees, you know, um, you know, just because they die with their landscaping. It would be nice if we could offer some of these trees to the businesses or hold some back.
Wherever there's a tree lost, uh, we'll replace it.
We'll replace it.
To hold some back so they don't have to go to the-
They should just let us know.
Yeah.
We, the tree committee actually never lost some trees. And, uh, they'll be replaced, actually if they failed, we're likely to put a different kind of tree there, but-
The last thing I love in my yard is another tree.
Yeah, but appreciate any, any help where you see a tree has died, but I think we've, we've got most of them on-
This is a time, you know, sometimes they die in July, you can't replace them any way to now.
I mean, if we held some back.
Uh, we're gonna, not, this one, we're already committed to how this one is, but we're always planting trees.
I'm sure the town manager would love for us to plant more trees, especially just to have leaves.
And, um, I don't know how far the, um, Police Department Committee has gotten, but I, um, would like to suggest that Jim stay on with the, um, Committee for the New Police Department, if you want to.
Counsel, I, I can stay on it, I think as a citizen, you know.
Okay. And, um, I think, I think that was it, um, I didn't have anything else.
Thanks, I have an interesting question, I'm sorry.
Have they?
You got two other words.
I know, I'm just saying, I came across the Open Meetings Act manual, um, that I think we can, Jen can easily copy and distribute to everybody who's coming in. So that gives a good, uh, look at the reasons for closing a meeting and what you can and cannot do in some of these circumstances. I think this is a good, quick read to go over, to layer yourself.
Yeah, I think the attorney making the presentation or the papers, it just makes sense.
Those guys, well, the state's attorney, and the Attorney General sometimes hit the road and do that for you.
Oh, yeah, they do, don't they?
At those meetings, they're-
Good God, they're doing all that stuff.
I think it's a good idea, Jim.
Open meetings was at the last, um, conference and anybody who attended at the last conference was certified for-
It's, they do it at every, you know, it's-
Yeah, um, open meetings and ethics is usually at every conference.
That's an older one, but they-
Don't use that.
I have lots of, here's the new one, this is easier to read.
Still, it's been in this file, it's, it's too old. It's all online.
I have it from the last conference.
That's, we'll copy yours if you're on.
Yeah, it's nice for everybody to have a copy to think about and, uh-
There's really, I mean, practically speaking, to close a meeting, there's only about six items that, that fall, that the mayor and council fall into.
Any other one is, is, uh, you know, you're only two, you can't have a quorum, can't have three councilmen talking about something, but two, that's gonna-
Well, I think the whole future about the open meeting law is gonna be online, uh, they, they keep, uh, talking about it, but I mean, if you're hav- having discussions online with, as a group and responding back and forth, that's, that's the future of the open meetings, they're gonna say that's-
That's out there.
As we're cleaning out our files.
How long do you think that is?
I looked at some of these things and they've been tight.
Well, as it stands, as it stands right now, you must say everything that's in the statement in order to go into an executive meeting. It's state law, it's not something we set up, I was on the very first committee with the mayor of Elton, Jim somebody.
Kraus.
Kraus.
Kraus, and he only talked about five hours. In order to get this open meetings law into effect. So that's the way it works and we, I don't believe Chestertown has ever been in a problem with the law.
No.
The toughest thing is, is when you discuss something in between meetings, it's hard to adjourn into executive session, you know, when something, uh, when an executive item comes up, it's the hardest thing.
Well, here's something LGIT put out that maybe Kim can call them, that they put out a public official lib, open meetings regulations and that's nice for everybody to have.
Well, now you have to consider emails too.
Oh, yeah. If you have Kim call them, okay, so we'll get an update from LGIT, that would be nice for everybody to have. Sorry, I got distracted, thinking there was something in the file, yeah, there was, thousand years old, uh, we got that done, where are we, Linda?
Maybe.
We're here.
Okay, I wanted to talk about the lighting, uh, on six hundred block of High Street, I called in about three of them, uh, we have now, we have five out.
There, there are five out, two of them are S O S and three of them are K and L.
That's right, but what's, what's the, uh, what's the progress, are they gonna get them, uh, back on, it's, the whole block is really dark.
Yeah.
Somebody's supposed to be paying for these, so if K and L is not paying-
K and L's supposed to be lighting theirs and, uh, I'll be talking with him. S O S, I, I, it's a different matter and I'll, I'll talk to them about it.
Today is Monday.
Yeah.
Have we talked to them tomorrow?
Yes.
I mean, they've been out a while now and it's not anything to do with Baldwin, because, because he thinks-
No, that they're privately owned, so the, the ones at K and L, I don't think that there's a thing wrong with them, other than they're turned off inside, that, I really don't wanna talk about that here, okay? But I will call both those entities about their privately owned lights.
If they're not gonna turn them on, then we have to have some other kind of lighting in the block.
Right.
That, that's my point, okay? It's just much too dark. Uh, let's see, uh, cones, cones, chief, being set out. Five hundred block of High Street, now, one man, it has been redoing his house and that was a good excuse, but the cones are not in front of his place, they're down the street. There's no activity, there's no one that lives in that house, so why would we have cones, uh, round the clock in front of, I mean, according to what I was always taught, that we could not do that on a regular basis.
All right, I have to check in, are you saying this department put them out there?
No, I think she's saying some individual put them out there.
If you just check on High Street Forest, that'd be great.
Pardon?
You're saying some individual put them out there?
It looks that way.
Yeah, are they near a dumpster?
No, not at all. Not at all, not the ones on Poppy, they're in that pub, uh-huh, I can't pronounce the name.
Okay, Pabachi, the, at the end.
Where there's nobody that lives there.
Yeah, I saw them there for the first time today, we'll just, we'll just pick them up.
Okay, that's good. And we did also have a public, one of those, I call them Johnny on the spots, in front, in front of the bungalows being renovated, couldn't they put it somewhere like behind the house? I mean, I'm, I'm sure Mrs. Hornet today is tired of looking at it.
I think they're almost done, the, the one that used to be blue.
Yeah, it was blue.
Yeah.
Isn't it still blue?
I think they're just about, the, the porch or the house.
Yeah, they changed colors.
Comfort seats.
Changed the color of the seats, well, now.
I think they're just about done construction, so.
Of a more serious nature, Mount Vernon Avenue has, uh, some of the residents have asked for a painted era on the road going toward the college so that people will remember that it's a one-way street. And Lynchburg to Cowbert, I've been requested, I believe I brought this up before, to get that one way from High Street to Cowbert Street. And probably, if at all possible, parking only on one side of the street. And a request for, in the four hundred block of Cowbert Street for residential parking only. And that, I guess the chief has to be involved in that.
Are school people parking there, or?
No, people from out of town, come in here and take over. And the people that live there have to go up by Bethel, and then the college also, it's time that Washington College looked into removing three properties that they own on- look into removing three properties that they own on this college avenue side of the college and make their own parking area. Because Bethel Church has no parking except relying on the school. And then the college doesn't have enough parking, so they're relying on College Avenue. And when there's a funeral at Bethel, I guess they call the college and say they need the street for that day. But it is very crowded, all the way down to, really down to the roadway that goes into the back of the school, elementary school. So if we, this can't be resolved overnight, but as quickly as possible. And I just wanted to mention, if anybody didn't notice, that Mr. Cecil Saunders did pass away.
Who was he?
A bigger one?
Eighty-three?
I don't know his age, but.
Eighty-three.
Gentlemen, he's eighty-three.
I can tell you when he came to work for the town, September 1st, 1975.
How about that?
Same day I did.
What? Oh, no kidding?
Yeah, he and I.
I visited him a few times at the nursing home.
Are you eighty-three?
No, he didn't say that.
I'm not gonna fight back. I'm just gonna lay down here.
And may I also mention that we lost Mr. Bobby Thompson, whose mother had the grocery store where the Washington Hall, our, that's ridiculous. Sacred Heart Church now, the new church, is on the same property where there used to be two houses there. And she had the grocery store in the side of her residence. So his service was Saturday.
Okay, Marty.
Friends in the dog park have reached out to the community. And I went out to Angelica Nursery last week and we picked up $1,500 worth of shrubs and trees that were gonna be planted on the outside of the dog park. And so far, we've received almost $3,000 in donations, which will be put directly into the dog park.
Great.
So I think that, and it's still coming in. So I think that's kinda great.
That's wonderful.
Appreciate the dog park that much that they're willing to give that money.
But the trees were free.
That's right. Oh, no, no, I did, they were, they were, I'm counting that in the, there was $1,500 worth of trees. I'm counting that in the donations. But we had some in-kind stuff. We've had a bench donated. It's nice. And it's, it's coming in. I've gotten as much as, as small as a $5 donation. And it's, of course, $1,000 for a bench, so.
Marty, I don't understand that. I thought dogs like trees. And you're putting the trees on the outside?
No, no, these are, these are not shade trees. We're gonna get shade trees inside.
Oh, okay.
Dogs.
Now we're, now we're talking.
We also have fire plugs too.
Oh, good.
You don't have to take the dog up to the dog park.
Each dog park has a fire. Now, we'll have shade trees inside. But you plant shrubs inside and sometimes they get used as fire plugs and they don't last very long, so.
Good for you.
Do we have?
And one other comment, I will not be at the first December meeting. We hold it at our regular meeting time. I scheduled.
We could have fired now.
Could have done the fireworks then.
I don't want, I don't want term limits passed while I'm away. Although.
You never miss a meeting.
It's been quoted, and I've said it several times, we have, we have term limits every time there's an election.
Yes, exactly.
And nothing can be proven more so than this time.
And Paul Sarbanes was the person who played that.
You guys probably won't buy this any more than my wife did. When I, I was trying to get the cheapest flight to Denver and back that I could. So I had to fly on a Tuesday. And she said, after I booked it all in, and you don't know how it is, fool with those people. She said, you know, you're gonna miss the first meeting. I said, you mean there's not 32 days in November? I thought there was 32 days in November, she said. No one's gonna buy that. So I'm sorry that I won't be here for that.
Don't you wanna change the meeting?
I'm the one that's.
I know.
I'm just seeing, Marty, just seeing.
So I think, but just don't pass term limits, 'cause, you know, we really hate that.
We don't need them. Do we have directional signs to the dog park on Hornick Road?
No, but we're trying to get them. We talked about.
We need several signs. We need the.
Once you get in there, where it is.
Trail signs. We need the dog park signs.
Valley sign.
And I just wanna make sure that we don't have.
You don't wanna hang the dog's directional on the same place where you put the sign about the mayor.
I think we should have a dog with its leg cocked in the direction of the park.
Put the dog parked out by the river.
Think that's, what's wrong with that?
Time for.
What, I sent the council an email about, Mr. Moog sent me a request for a match on $16,000 for a study to be done by Air Saint Croix. So I sent it to the council. Do you wanna take it up at the next meeting or?
My recommendation is that, I don't want to approve something. I don't know what it's for. I think it's time for, I think the waterfront committee needs to do a presentation on their findings.
Absolutely.
And I think we have to have the new members who are gonna be in the council here also. Because right now, I don't even know what, what they want, they want to do. And because we're almost half ownership of the property, we should understand what they're talking to Air Saint Croix about. So with your agreement, I would like to have them give us a presentation on their scope of work, on what they're thinking about. I do know.
I couldn't agree with you more. I just, it just, it just seems funny that.
It's irresponsible of us.
We don't even know what we're getting, so.
And I know one member of the committee has expressed concerns that some things are being done backwards. So I need, we need to get these things straight before we spend money. So if you all are agreed, we can see if we can get them in here.
That could even be a special meeting.
Before Marty leads, yeah.
Second, second meeting in December.
No, it should be, you should.
Yeah, I'd go with the special meeting.
We can all be a special meeting because I think, we can see if we can.
We need the time.
Okay, that's fine. I just don't wanna be, I'd like to hear it.
You should be here because you will be here next year. And I think this is, you know, this is a big future piece for us. And it has got to be done well and carefully. And we have an obligation to the citizens to make sure it's done well.
Absolutely.
So if we can see maybe.
I'm quite surprised that they would ask us in this way without explaining.
Not, not, not just email, no. I'm sorry. So we'll see if we can find, Jen can maybe send an email around to us and see if we can find, let's see.
And there's not, there's, well, it's only Monday, so there's not, because next week is Thanksgiving.
Next week.
So it has to be the weekend.
First weekend of December, sometime in the first week.
No, no, he's gonna be away.
Are you gonna be away for all week?
First time before you're not going away in New York.
Tuesday, Tuesday?
Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
I'm leaving Wednesday for, for New York.
Well, but you got Monday and Tuesday.
Uh-huh.
Marty's gonna be back the Tuesday after the meeting.
That's too late. Give it in before Thanksgiving if they'll come.
For the, for the planning?
They're already prepared. They know what they want. They should have had a meeting with us before this.
I've gotta look at my schedule. That week before Thanksgiving is.
Well, you got all rested this week. How long does it take to settle?
The week before Thanksgiving is next week.
No, the week before Thanksgiving is this week. Next week is Thanksgiving.
It's giving week.
Well, you got four days this week.
Why don't you see if, if the meeting can be arranged? I just wanna clarify one thing. The, the request is not for 16, it's for half of 16. I just want everybody to know.
So it's for 8,000. Still, I think we need to.
Apparently, I sent you this email, is for 16 with Air Saint Croix. And DBED is matching half of it.
Who's matching half?
DBED.
Department of Business and Economic Development.
Business and Economic Development.
And having worked those programs, I'd like to know the strings attached.
But I, you know, we'll look at the schedule. I'll look at my schedule.
It's 80 DBED, 8 to 10 months.
Okay, and see what we can find. Okay, Denos, the last MVA mobile office here will be the 16th of December. Okay? And the 17th. Now we can recycle up this paper too. Get that filed out. Um. Anybody out there have anything they wanna say? Yes.
When you scheduled that meeting, are you gonna let the public know?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Those of us that live down there, we'd kind of like to know.
Oh, no, no, that was my point about this whole thing, is that this needs to be a session where everybody can be informed. It's one of the things that we have always said that was going to happen, that citizens had the right to listen before, and this will not be a final plan or anything. But I think we need to let everybody know when we're talking about these things. Anybody else? Sir? Anybody?
That is also, this waterfront committee is your first presentation, 'cause there's a paper that you were supposed to get a report in November.
June.
June.
Originally, originally June.
They got sold with November. So this is, this is that meeting.
I hope, yeah.
We have not met.
Because they have not come before us before. And that's why I emphasize that this needs to be done.
So it'll be posted on the website or.
Oh, yeah.
An email asked if you're on the news.
Sure.
News better group.
I think the purpose of the request for these funds was to draw up their, draw their ideas onto something that, that they could present. Just not representing them, but thinking that that's what they, their idea was, to put it in a format that they could explain it to the public in. And I did, they did discuss that with us several months ago, when the numbers were actually bigger than that. But, 'cause we, I remember we discussed what we're gonna match it with, whether it was gonna be from the funds for the, from the college for the rail trail, or from the funds we once budgeted for that area when Gibson Anthony was.
Well, I think we get, makes it difficult, is that we've got the NEA grant that we need to move forward on the playscape at Wilmer Park. And we need to see how these all fit in. And I just don't, I don't have the information. And.
And that's pretty expensive to match.
Yeah. So we need to have a little more information before we can proceed. And I know their intentions are good. But I think it would be irresponsible of us to not find out exactly what they're thinking, because this is our property too.
Well, we can't put the money up without knowing what we're doing.
No, absolutely, no, no. So we'll see if we can arrange. I'll get back to Jen on a date. Let's start looking at the dates. And you could all, if there's a date, you're all stuck and make it crazy. Let her know. Okay, anything else? Okay, well, that's motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aight.
Okay, good night.
Good night.